Come up upon us. Thank you all for being here tonight. We are still missing Mr. Sasse and Mr. Darby. Any?
Mr. Darby is probably on the way.
On the way, Mr. Sasse. Any word?
I've not heard.
Nothing? All right, so we're going to get started and maybe they will come as we are making presentations. For those who are online, thank you. I think Mr. Darby is walking through the door. Thank you all for being a part of this public process. The first committee we're going to have is Transportation Sales Tax Special Committee, in which, of which all members of council are part. Item one, approval of minutes from the October 23rd meeting.
Move second.
Probably move in seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay, the ayes have it. We have a presentation. Two A, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of council. My name is Chris Dubuque. I'm the deputy director of the Green Belt program and give the update today. We're going to start with just some general statistics of the program. And just as a reminder, the graphics you see to the right-hand side of these slides, these are pulled directly from our public dashboard. So these are readily available to the public. The information is linked directly to our database and it gets refreshed daily. So these numbers are available and updated daily. Since the first round of rewards in 2007, overall county council has approved 234 green belt projects. That includes 66 conservation easements, 140 Fee-Simple projects, 10 minor improvement-only projects, and 11 corridor segments. And the breakdown between rural, urban, and rural are below there as well. So far, the, out of those projects, that has protected 26,170 acres. You can see the breakdown between the different projects below there. And that includes, as well as the acreage, 12.3 miles of corridor as well. These next three slides just kind of show the dispersment of these green belt projects. I divided it up into three regions, just so you could see the spread a little bit easier. So the south region there, and you can see that dashed black line is the urban growth boundary. Our central region, primarily within the urban growth boundary there, many of those urban projects are much smaller, so it's a little harder to see on that graphic. And then our north region as well. Total funds awarded thus far is 169.7 million. That includes 31 million towards the purchase of conservation easements, 130.3 million towards Fee-Simple acquisition. You can see the breakdown between rural and urban below. The average cost per acre is just over 6,000 per acre, and that goes back to the very earliest projects of the program. Generally, we're looking at approximately 1,700 per acre for conservation easements, as opposed to approximately 15,000 per acre for Fee-Simple acquisition. Match provided with green belt funds is a total of 235.7 million, equalling 139 percent. Forty-five percent of the acres protected through this program is available for public access, whether that be current public access or future access. And 89 percent of green belt funding has gone towards purchasing land for public accessibility. In addition, 62.5 million has gone towards projects within minority lands, equalling almost 4,000 acres. This chart shows the current available balance for the rural and urban allocation. Just over 16 million for rural, and approximately 7.2 million for urban. And you can see those projected lifetime balances on the left-hand side of the screen there. And that, that includes the life of that half, the first and second half penny sales tax. This chart shows the current available balance for each municipality, for the urban funds. You can see all of the municipalities are out of the negative, with the exception of Folly Beach, still at negative 108,000, and urban unincorporated at negative 5.3 million. This chart shows the current projected balances for each municipality, with North Charleston at roughly 28 million, Mount Pleasant roughly 17 million, North Charleston roughly 22 million, and urban unincorporated at just over 1 million for the lifetime. These are all the projects that have closed since we have last updated council in April of 2024. As you can recall, last summer cycle, we had 18 projects that were approved. We've worked through closing the vast majority of those. We've closed on 12 projects in the last seven months. These are the remaining projects yet to close. Total of 17, and 11 of those are the Mount Pleasant Way segments. We have started to see some initial appraisals come through on those for a couple segments, so we do anticipate that starting to ramp up here soon. The FY '26 summer application cycle is coming to a close with council's final decision next week. And the FY '26 winter application cycle just opened on November 3rd and will close on January 30th. If all the current projects for this application cycle are approved, then approximately 18.3 million will be available for the FY '26 winter cycle. Just a couple of updates on the potential extension of the half penny transportation sales tax. Green Belt staff is actively participating in the public engagement efforts by attending public meetings and answering questions about the program the public may have. There's four ways for the public to get involved. It includes filling out the online questionnaire, attending meetings and workshops, submitting comments and questions via email, and signing up for updates on charlestontransportation.com. This is the QR code once again for the survey. We're asking that the public to provide their input by December 1st, and a summary of that input will be provided to council in January of 2026. These are some updated survey statistics we received this morning. So far, you can see 1,121 participants. The responses are referring to each individual question that has gotten a response. 415 subscribers to the newsletter, receiving updates on TST. And the comments number there is referring to the open-ended comments that the public left. Here are some updated numbers on website visitation as well, that we received this morning. Those users are referring to each individual user to the website. And then those users sometimes revisited the website, so that's where that sessions number came from. And the pages, multiple pages viewed by each, by each user. So that's all I have for the program update. I'm available for any questions on the FY '26 summer application cycle when we get to it. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions on the program update.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Dubuque, for that very comprehensive summary. If you can go back to the slide just before this slide, no, the slide after this slide. Just wanted to just remind council, or at least refresh council, of the participation of individuals who are actively engaged in this process. I think that it was definitely wise, you know, to launch, you know, such a platform. Look, based on the surveys, 12,861 responses thus far. Individuals leaving comments, 1,375. So certainly, we look forward to receiving those. I think in the last iteration, we may have had 1,000 participants across the board. Or, Mr. Adams, if you can correct me, in the last iteration of this, was it as robust a participation?
We had total, last time, 1,018. So we've already exceeded that in about a little over two-week time period.
Okay, so certainly, we continue to encourage engagement. On November 17th at Park Circle, we're going to have our own listening session. So we encourage council persons to take part of that, take part in that as well at 6:30 PM. Any questions or comments for Mr. Dubuque? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we're now ready to move to our finance committee agenda. All members of council are part of that committee. Item one, approval of the minutes of the, probably move in seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay, the ayes have it. Item two A.
Approval A and B.
All right, probably moved and seconded. Items two A and B. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay, the ayes have it. Item three A, a resilience and sustainability update. I'll just say Molly. And I know we don't call people by their first name, but certainly her last name is, will twist my tongue.
Sure. Well, thank you, Chairman, and good evening, council members. My name is Molly Cagiano, and I am the manager of the resilience and sustainability division. This is the first update that you all are getting from our division. We were just formalized in January of 2025, so been here for almost a year. There are two of us in this division, myself and Ally Petrucci, our sustainability coordinator. Ally leads the implementation of our sustainability plan, and I focus on advancing the strategies in our hazard vulnerability assessment, and the resilience element of our comp plan. We also have one intern that's working with us for the school year, and we are very grateful to have him. So we have two documents that guide our work in this division. Both the sustainability plan and the risk assessment, you have seen council adopted the sustainability plan in August of 2024, and you were briefed on the assessment in October of '24, almost a year ago. So what I'll do today is give you an update on our progress implementing the sustainability plan, and how we're using that assessment. But first, I did want to take just a second to talk about, or just acknowledge, sort of the overlap between resilience and sustainability, but also note that there are some key differences in, in the two concepts. So, for example, the sustainability plan, the goals are really focused on reducing our greenhouse gases, increasing energy efficiency, conserving our resources. It's more of that mitigation piece, to mitigate our future risk. Whereas the vulnerability assessment is more like a toolbox of, of data and information, and it helps us anticipate and adapt and recover from events that shock our communities, like hurricanes, but events that are also those chronic stressors in our community, like aging infrastructure, like food insecurity, like we're seeing in some of our communities today. So the goal of our division is to address all of these interconnected issues, and that really requires systems thinking. So that's, that's what our division is tasked with. So over the past year, we have been cataloging all of the resilience and sustainability initiatives, projects, programs, and events that take place across the county. We want to understand what types of projects we're doing, what we're not doing, who's involved, and what the community benefit is. We know there are many, many groups doing this kind of work, and we're trying to, first of all, establish a baseline of what's happening, and then also put a platform in place for coordination to advance this work in a more collaborative way. So we're tracking internal and external efforts in the county. This inventory holds 100 projects, initiatives, programs right now. So a more focused update on the sustainability plan implementation, of those five big moves that you all are familiar with, those 100 projects fall into the five big moves in this way. So almost 40% of those projects are focused on sustainable and inclusive transportation. 30% are focused on affordable and resilient buildings, and the remaining 30% are split among the other three big moves. The sustainability plan does have the most initiatives in one and two, so this breakdown kind of aligns with, with the strategies. Of those 100 projects, again, we're, we are currently working, actively working on 55% of those. So we are, we have, we are, we are doing most of those right now in this last year. Some of the examples of those projects are doing weatherization and energy audits. We're working with community development to conduct those. And the food composting program, working with environmental management. We have electric vehicles in our fleet, so we're working with facilities and all departments at the county to rotate those vehicles. We know Public Works is doing the photocatalytic asphalt to help with urban heat reduction. You all familiar with the plastic bag ordinance? The Pollinaric Gardens, we're working with the DCA Office and Public Services, as well as our green liaisons team. Capital Projects with the Azalea Complex, doing the green globes, understanding how we can increase our energy efficiency, similarly with the energy savings, energy savings performance contract. These are just examples of all the ways that we're collaborating across departments. We can't, we're not doing it the two of us, so kudos to everybody that's participating in this. This is also very much a community-focused, community-driven work. We, our division has attended 33 different community outreach events since February. This includes doing tours at our composting facility. We led a sea rise stroll partnered with the South Carolina Aquarium in the Ten Mile Community, to see in real time how king tides were flooding Seafood Road. Also, the, we developed a VOAD, or worked on establishing that group. And there was a lot of outreach done in that, in that, in that way. And most recently, we were at the Dorchester Library doing a trunk-or-treat event, handing out conservation kits, and kind of educating the community. There's also a pumpkin smash event coming up at Otranto Library this Saturday, from 10 to 1, to encourage people to compost their pumpkins. So an update on the resilience strategies. So like I mentioned, this assessment is more of that toolbox. It has a lot of data and information in there. One of the strategies that's in this assessment is focused on this programmatic approach to flood mitigation. So the goal of this strategy is, is to increase the efficiency and the effectiveness of the mitigation, the flood mitigation work that we're doing, and then expand that investment in flood mitigation. So we worked with Fernleaf to do a flood insurance gap analysis across the county, to understand where the highest levels of risk are, as well as where the flood insurance policyholders are. And then we further overlay that with socioeconomic data. So we were trying to understand what the current vulnerability is in communities, and then have that give us information to figure out what type of mitigation effort would be most effective, and like, long-lasting. So just, for example, like if a community is, has a high risk to flooding, but many do not hold flood insurance policies in that area, but that community is well-resourced, we might encourage them to purchase flood insurance. But if it's the same situation, and the community isn't as well-resourced, we would think about other strategies, like infrastructure improvements, focusing on drainage improvements there, that type of thing. So this framework helps us to make decisions like that. The second resilience strategy we worked on this year was developing a, a brownfield strategic plan. So again, we worked with Fernleaf Consulting to engage communities across the county, but mostly focused in North Charleston and Hollywood. These community members helped us identify, or helped us put together an inventory of brownfield areas that they want to see revitalized. But we tied this into our hazard vulnerability assessment by seeing where we could revitalize brownfields that both had an economic impact, as well as that environmental impact, so reducing flooding and reducing our risk to heat and, and so forth. So in terms of grant funding, our division has received a total of $325,000 for this fiscal year in grants. Many of them are from the South Carolina Energy Office. And next year, we are hoping to receive 2.1 million. Two of the programs that we want to apply for are federal, and the application is not open at the moment, but as soon as it opens up, we are planning to apply for $1 million for the OLDCC, the Office of Local Defense and Community Cooperation, to work with Joint Base and develop a micro-good solution. The other $1 million application is for the EPA on the brownfields grant that I was just mentioning. We're partnering with North Charleston and Hollywood to do that. And then continuing applying for the grants with the South Carolina Energy Office, because we have been successful with those. In terms of cross-departmental collaboration, we are very collaborative in this department, and I wanted to just highlight three of the nine recommendations that you all approved back in May. Three of those recommendations are directly related to the work that we do in, in our division. Prioritizing hazard mitigation, moving fast on resilience projects currently in the pipeline. And then, number nine, deepen the private sector, and non-governmental and faith-based relationships. This is, this is directly related to the development of the VOAD. That's been a, a key effort that I've been working on for the last several months, to convene and organize and really build some momentum around disaster preparedness planning, and encouraging nonprofits and faith-based groups to be working together, sharing resources, understanding how we can collaborate before disaster happens. So we're working, we have a lot of committees and collaboratives that we're a part of. And my point here is that what we're trying to do in our division is to better coordinate and kind of align all of the different groups and committees and gatherings that are happening, and figure out a way to better, you know, coordinate everybody. Get everybody aware of everything that's happening, instead of having to be part of a specific group. So, we are hosting a resilience and sustainability symposium on November 19th at Trident Tech. The goal of this is to align Charleston County for a more resilient and sustainable future. So we want to convene partners across jurisdictions, including NGOs and government agencies. We want to add to that inventory, all the projects, programs that's happening around the county. And then ultimately, we want to establish a county-wide resilience collaborative, that will be that kind of overarching group that can see all the projects and strategies and everything that's happening related to resilience and sustainability, so that we know where we can better partner, where we can go for funding together, where we can direct resources, those types of things. So you are welcome to attend that event. We hope to see you there. And that is the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilman Boykin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I might be tying three different things together.
If you would turn your mic on, I believe your mic is off.
Apologize for that. I might be intersecting three different things at one time on my, I guess, comment. Mr. Adams and Ms. Cagiano, do we, do either of y'all know, do we have an inventory put together on roadways that over crest routinely with, with king tides or other, you know, rain bombs and things like that, that it's been a recurrent problem that might be considered for potential transportation sales tax projects?
We don't necessarily have a list, but we could determine that by the elevation of the roadway versus elevations of tides that are adjacent to the marsh.
Okay, thank you. That's something we're actually doing on Central Park Road. We're raising that roadway. And I just thought that might be some way to collaborate between the resiliency aspect and what Public Works is doing in conjunction with potential projects for the sales tax things.
Any, Vice Chair Kowalski?
I want to echo what Councilman Boykin said. I mean, that would be something I think would be very helpful for us to see, and to see how it gets in the sales tax referendum, because we have the causeway between Mount Pleasant and Solomson will also be with the tides and rising sea levels would be an issue that's both flooding and transportation. I just wanted to ask, I heard with interest of brownfield strategic plan, and you've engaged with the city of North Charleston. And just looking objectively, the most, the most major development that's going to happen is Union Pier, totally at flood level, is a premature to engage with the city of North Charleston. Hundreds of millions of dollars of development is going to go at our most vulnerable point in the county. And I wonder how that fits in with what we can do and what you can do.
Yeah, that's a great question. I would love to look into that more and see if I could get back to you with more information. We have identified several sites around, in North Charleston, around a lot of the open space in the old industrial areas, and they're adjacent to communities. Those, those areas are the ones that were primarily identified first for revitalization. But yeah, I'm absolutely interested in exploring that and talking about that more.
Thank you. Mr. Irvin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, and kind of to follow up on that, I just wanted to get a little clarification on the, the brownfield grant program. I mean, maybe I missed the headline here, but you were talking about identifying areas that are developable that need to get cleaned up. Is that, that's what this money would go for, to clean up, you know, pollution, basically?
Yeah, so we're specifically applying for an EPA coalition grant, which means that we are partnering intentionally with the communities that we will be working in, to make sure that those local voices are there to talk about what needs to hap, or what they'd like to see. So it is an environmental contamination cleanup effort, but it's also an effort to actually do retrofits and potentially design what could be there, and position us for funding to build that design.
Okay, very good. Yeah, nothing more for me.
All right, I thought Mr. Moody would chime in to congratulate you all on $325,000 in grants. I thought he was going to say that, but I, I wanted to at least feed that to him, so that he can, you know, note.
Chairman, means it's, it's been said enough, it's been beaten to half.
Yes, yes. And we used to be seatmates, so, you know, of course, you know, I could see the scribble on your paper. And then I also wanted to, again, just point out the intersectionality with the emergency management division with the VOAD and all of these other articulations that are happening across county agencies. And then lastly, I did have a conversation, Mr. Pryor, with Mayor Burgess. This week, we were on a panel together, and we sidebared after that panel, relative to the plastic bag ordinance in North Charleston. He's very much in favor of it. And Molly and Ally will be presenting on November 20th at the North Charleston City Council meeting. And so certainly, after our county council meeting, we, we plan to support you all in that. But we're moving forward with, with that effort and that work. So thank you all very much. Next week, we do have the sustainability, resilience and sustainability symposium. And so it's an all-day affair. Please, 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 come on out and let's support our work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Item four A, lease agreement with Trident United Way.
Move for approval.
Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Question?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to make sure that we have the lease contemplates improvements we're making to the space. It will be recapturing that money?
They are doing it. Mr. Tooten?
Mr. I believe they are doing that.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. I thought originally, we were planning to do that and then build it into the lease.
We are, but it is two separate. Trident's paying for their part that they're doing.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I saw a schematic, and I saw it was kind of over front-left or wherever it was, and that's good. I just, I thought we were making the improvements and building it into the lease to recapture that money. So, but if they're paying for their own, if they're paying for the improvements to our property, then bring it on.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Posers nay, the ayes have it. Four B, demolition of the Lee Building, 3366 Rivers Avenue.
Move for approval.
Second.
Probably move in seconded. All the, yes.
Mr. Darby, are you comfortable moving forward with this?
By all means, sir. The majority. Just fine, sir.
I just want to make sure.
Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. All right, the ayes have it. Four C.
Move for approval, four C.
Probably moved, was there a second?
Yes, sir.
Seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. The ayes have it. The green belt items, five A, well, five A. Is there any consideration for the entire group, or one, we're taking these one at a time?
I moved, approved five A through five J.
All right, probably moved and seconded.
I would prefer to take them one at a time.
One at a time. Five A, Montgomery Track Rural Green Belt Project.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may ask, perhaps the administrative may know, are any of these projects restricting public usage, sir?
Mr. Tooten?
Yes, sir, it's a mix. We have some that have public access, and some that are just conservation easements.
Can you tell us the ones that have public access and the ones that don't?
The public, and Chris, please check me on this also. Also, the public access Palmetto Terrace Park, Betsy Karason Nature Trail Phase Five, let's see, Edisto Island Museum, Maxi Farm Nature Preserve. Did I get them all? Did I get them all, Chris? Am I missing any? Those are the ones with public access.
So you're saying these are the ones with public access, the others are just conservation?
Sir, I got them all.
Yeah, so this, this chart here, five of the projects were conservation easements. Of those... Of those five conservation easements, one of them offers public access, and that's the Edisto Island Museum. It currently has public access and will continue to have access with the easement on it. Five of the projects are fee simple projects. Of those fee simple projects, three have public access and two will not as they're solely scenic buffer parcels.
Which one are they, sir?
Okay.
Which one are they?
Can you tell us specifically the projects and call them by name?
Absolutely. So first up there, Kiowa Island Natural Habitat Conservancy for the Betsy Karason Nature Trail Phase Five, that will have public access. The next two projects through Low Country Land Trust, both conservation easements, Montgomery Track and AC Two.
Five A, five D, five E so far.
Five A?
Five D, five E. You just keep calling them, I know the, I know the agenda item number.
Yeah, five E will have public access. Five F will not have public access, just a scenic buffer. Five G will have public access. Five H, no public access, just scenic buffer. Five I, no public access, conservation easement. Five J, no public access, conservation easement.
What about five B?
Five B, no public access.
Five C?
That is public access.
Thank you so much.
Five A is public access?
No.
Five A is no public access.
Okay, thank you.
So no public access, five A, five B, five F, five H, five I, five J. Okay? Thank you so much. Five A, Montgomery Track, it was properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known.
Discussion?
Okay, discussion, yes, sir.
A question, I guess, related to this one and this one, B and D and G. All four of these, A, B, D and G, are dealing with the state conservation bank in some form or fashion. Maxi Farm, item G, has got their $400,000 already approved and in the bank.
That's correct.
Five A?
Five B, five D, we're waiting, they're waiting until at least January because the state, the state ran out of money. This just kind of seems to me to be thrown together. So why wouldn't we kick them until January, February, until the state has approved their money to come back to us then? Thoughts? I mean, not nailing it down, but why wouldn't, why wouldn't we wait and consider that once the puzzle is all put together?
We certainly can. I would have to defer to the applicant to kind of understand better their timeline. I will say, you know, we wouldn't obviously close on, on those easements if that funding didn't come through, and that funding would just come back to the allocation. So there's not really any risk involved necessarily. One note for the Betsy Karason Nature Trail Phase Five, while their application to the state bank did get deferred to the next cycle, they have pledged to cover that $600,000 regardless to be able to close on the property in the winter, in the new year. So they are committed to covering that even if they get that.
Ms. Honeycutt?
So, Mr. Dubuque, just so I'm clear, any project that doesn't have its matching fund, our grant is contingent on that money coming through?
Correct. We would not close unless, unless they find some other grant funding or fundraise or find the money elsewhere. We wouldn't close and that money would come back to the allocation.
And so to your point, there's no risk in us moving ahead with our allocation if somebody else is still pending, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Boykin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Honeycutt, I'm right there with you. I mean, this is just an administration of a closing, and none of our county funds are at risk and the deal's not at risk to not go through as far as losing that money.
I would also, you know, just along with Mr. Moody, when we know that there's still fund, funding ambiguity, that we should wait until there is at least resolution as it relates to the other funding sources before bringing it before council. Now certainly, you know, these things can be, again, based on contingencies, pulled back, but then why even obligated to the, to the extent that we are pulling it out of, out of the bank where other projects potentially, you know, that have funding ready to go could also, you know, be considered at the same time. And not that they're not being, but I'm just saying that when the full funding puzzle is in place, and we have a cycle that just opened, and so it's not like, you know, they are kind of out of the loop, there's a cycle that just, the winter cycle just opened. And so if their funding comes in place, I think we should start bringing these things forth in cycles where those matches are already secure. And so that gives us confidence that when we then, you know, even though there is no risk, but there's a better path forward, because again, we're not just kind of sending you out in hope, but we're sending you out knowing, you know, that all of the other pieces are in place, and then ours is the last, you know, kind of piece that then enables the project to go forward. Mr. Boykin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I agree with y'all's position on this. What I would say is more of a practical matter, if we had a situation where there were more asked than available funds, that would make good sense. But we're not in that situation. We've got more money than we have requests, and so a lot of times, you know, the conservation bank, they're on a different cycle sometimes with us as far as when their meetings are. To try to herd all these cats together takes a lot of work, and so to wait till, you know, last minute to try to say, we won't approve unless you approve is kind of like a Mexican standoff situation. It, it has to flow a certain way, so I think they do it right and that everything's moving along. And so, in fact, the county's commitment may weigh in on the state's commitment, but in the end of all this, we're not going to lose a single dollar of a project that doesn't go forward.
And then also, just as, you know, further information, we can help them recalibrate their processes. If they know that we're not going to approve these things until cycles where matches and funding formulas are already put together, then they will recalibrate the way that they bring it to us as opposed to, and so again, I think right now we're operating in a paradigm that has been, we've been arguing and/or debating as whether or not it's sustainable moving forward. If then we are doing a reset, even the conservation funders or whoever these other folk who are bringing these projects forth will start tweaking the way that they even make the application, knowing that in those cycles, they need to make certain that the other matches come forth. Our, our funding could be contingent upon the state having, you know, already kicked in their portion. We saw that the state ran out of, out of money. So at some point, we can't hope that these pieces are going to actually come together. I do get it that there's no risk. And we can assume that, you know, going forward, and certainly there are no other, you know, competing projects that we then were kind of making a decision on as to this one or that one. But at the same token, it's the process going forward, making certain that they come with these things already in place. Mr. Kowalski?
Two quick questions. Are there any projects potentially that wouldn't get funded or done if we allocate this? That's my first question. There's.
You're saying if, if you deferred those?
No, if we vote affirmatively today, would that prevent anything else from getting done?
No. So currently, as you can see on this chart, there is just over 16 million available in the rural allocation. All these projects total just under 5 million. So if all are approved today, we'd still have 11 million in the urban allocation for the FY 26 winter cycle.
And then the second question is, this, I properly understand what I'm voting on, is that we're not really expending money today if we vote affirmatively. We're just saying if the state approves it, we're voting today that we will then spend our money, but if they don't approve it, we're not actually spending any money today. Is that correct?
That's a, that's correct. The funds are just being approved.
Right. So we're not expending money today. We're just saying that if they do approve it, then we will have approved ours and that's all we're doing.
That's correct.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Sasse?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I think in the last spending, in the last cycle when we did this, I know there was one that I saw was closed. It was, I think it was Hamlin, Hamlin Road, there's a park over there, there's a chapel on Hamlin Road, and that was one of those ones where we were waiting for several grants or several series of funds to be approved. And I think in the last, the last cycle that we did, didn't all those, didn't all those get their funding, the ones that we approved?
Correct. There may be one pending closing, but Oakley Chapel has closed.
Right. Yes, sir.
Mr. Warman?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to offer sort of my thoughts on this whole issue of, you know, whether we have to be sort of the last one in the deal or not. And I just think, you know, if our function here is to be a facilitator, and we can do so without, you know, any, any risk of the bottom line, and in fact, do so without sort of holding money from, from otherwise qualifying projects, which is the situation here, I do think, you know, I don't know if these are the most complex deals in the world, I mean, I think, but, you know, as we're learning with housing, as we've done with Green Belt, I mean, they are complex deals, there's multiple parties, there's a lot going on, and I probably don't have the most experience on it, on this dais, but I do know that, you know, these types of deals, I think just having something in place can, can provide its own benefit. So, so having our funding in place and letting folks be able to rely on that, to, you know, to the extent they can get all the other puzzle pieces, I think that's a facilitation role we can play in addition to the actual funds that hopefully, you know, reduces transaction costs and helps, helps, you know, move us towards the goal we all want to. So I really don't have an issue with the, you know, the state conservation bank money being sort of pending, based on all we've heard that, you know, we're protected against any actual financial loss from that.
Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Chairman. I guess I'll ask for the question after, since I started this mess, and it probably pertains to a lot of, not mess, it's a good discussion, since it pertains to a lot of things, but I guess I would disagree in that, you know, the half-cent sales tax was voted down and there's no assurance that the new one's coming. So we've talked about needing to be judicious with our funds. So while there may not be a perceived risk, when you approve deals that are, and I tell you, when you, when I see deals slapped together like this, I see, I see applicants that are going, the money may be running out soon, I better get at the trough before my shot is gone. That's what that tells me. And so when you approve a deal like this, contingent on whatever, as likely as it may be to come through, what's the rush? You're not, you know, you're, you're blocking the money from somebody else who may come up in the next cycle, is my, is, or you may or may not be, but we don't have, there's no timeframe for us to spend this money. So I just think that these deals need to be polished, everything's got to be there, everything's got to be put together before they come to us. And that's my, I would ask, call the question now.
Then question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I go back to, this is merely an allocation. I think Mr. Dubuque can confirm that in most of these green belt projects, the county is the largest contributor. We most usually are the lion's share contributor on most all of these. The role of the conservation bank has always been smaller than ours because they, they're dealing with the entire state. So we are a leader, we are a national poster child of doing this right, and I certainly don't want to jeopardize opportunities for conservation when we, you know, the, these applications should be voted on their own merit, you know, not because it might fall through. That money will come back to the account and it can be recycled and used for other projects, but I don't want to handcuff our folks out there that are doing this good work and worrying out the county bill, won't prove something because all the pieces aren't exactly tied together. So that's my two cents thing.
Ms. Honeycutt?
I just wanted to ask, because I think the middle ground in this is to make sure that we're not leaving this allocation pending indefinitely. So in these agreements, do we put a timeline on, okay, you need to get your money together by X?
There's, there's no timeline as far as closing. I'd say most, you know, there's a couple that, that are pending a few years, but for the most part, they happen within that same year they're approved. There is a timeline, once we execute the grant agreement, to close within 120-day window. But no, there is no deadline to be able to.
Is the grant agreement signed before or after all the funding is available?
It, it's signed just before closing, so all the funding would be.
Okay. My suggestion in all of this, and I think Mr. Moody raises a good point, I tended to agree at the outset with what Mr. Boykin was saying, is look, there's a time value to money, you know, real estate's only going up in value, so we don't want to miss opportunities because we're the last to the table or develop some policy that puts us at a disadvantage. However, I think we should put some time limits on this kind of stuff because people will linger. They will put together maybe less robust packages because they know they don't have a time limit, and we should probably, to his point, in being more prudent or judicious with these resources that may be not there in the future, start looking at ways we can do it that way. I think that's sort of a balance of those two positions. Thank you.
All right, five A. Yeah, Mr. Pryor?
Just a question, leading up to what Ms. Honeycutt just said, why can't we invoke that right now? I'm in the motion to say each one of these folks that are pending on other funding, got up to 18 months, 12 months, or 24, you know, six months, whatever we want to put. And if you put that in there now, I mean, you know, the money will be tied up before we know for a year or six months versus just forever.
All right, Mr. Darby?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to probably to know that my knee voices, my knee vote on these are attuned to the fact that less affluent taxpayers do not have equal access to the space for which they are going to contribute. So my new vote will be based upon that, sir.
Mr. Warman?
I'm following up on Ms. Honeycutt and Mr. Pryor's statements. I just, I'm, I'm happy to put, I'm happy to vote for something that puts that in position on, on now, with the understanding that we can maybe get some feedback from staff and the applicants to, to give us greater context on Tuesday, or I guess next Thursday. But, yeah, I mean, I think that's, I don't see any reason why we can't start now.
All right. We've been having these conversations based on policies, and we're kind of piecemealing policies, particularly relative to this green belt program as they come in, project by project. And I think overwhelmingly, we need to send, you know, the green belt folk back, to come back with uniform, you know, standard operating procedures that embed all of these type things in so that when these projects come, we are not making it up every single time as we are approving or disapproving these, these projects. When looking at the fact that we may or may not have another transportation sales tax that enables us to extend this program, this is it. We don't have any more money, no more. And so, you know, carte blanche, tying up these things in perpetuity until such time, and then other projects that come forth can't even, you know, see the light of day because, again, these projects, once we approve these tonight, they're going to be obligated until they're not obligated. And so when you say there's no risk, there is a risk, because if we're dragging it out for a couple of years and then they finally come to a place that they can't realize it, then, you know, projects that could have come during that period would not have been, especially if, you know, funding is not available, would not be able to make those applications. Mr. Sasse?
Thank you, sir. I, I agree, if we're going to, if we're going to put a time limit on it, what would be wrong with it being, being, being able to be finalized by the next round? By the next round of, of projects?
So we're, we have a cycle going forth now? I mean, it's open now, isn't it? And it closes when?
End of January.
Okay, so I mean, that would be it?
Thirty days.
They're quarterly now, so it probably needs to be.
Oh, they are quarterly now? Okay.
For the state bank?
Well, no, I mean, our rounds are quarterly now or there are six months?
Uh, six months.
That's, that's correct. I mean, we're not going to, I don't think one of these is going to drag out two years, and that's not right. That'd be too long. That would be too long.
All right, so you called for the question, somebody down there called for it, so we're, we're done. We're done, because we can go back and forth. I think we need to put this on a committee agenda, and we need to workshop this because we've sent them back, we've come back with nothing, and every time we deal with these green belt projects, particularly, particularly now that we have to scrutinize them with a little bit more, you know, scrutiny, we just need clear-cut procedures moving forward. Five A, we're going to do a roll call vote.
Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Nay.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kowalski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Nay.
Mr. Pryor?
Nay.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Chairman Middleton?
Nay.
The motion passes with five ayes and four nays.
Five B, roll call vote, AC Two Rural CE Green Belt Project.
Somebody's got to move, did somebody move all of them at one time? Okay.
They moved, no, no.
They moved, no, no.
You and Ms. Honeycutt moved for all of them and then somebody asked to.
Individually, yes. 5B, probably moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All right. Roll call.
They moved for all of them, so I don't need a motion at every.
Well, I thought Mr. Moody said to disaggregate them.
They're all on the table, they're just called separately. He just asked to separate the votes, basically.
Got it. Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Okay. Um, Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Nay.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Nay.
Mr. Pryor?
Nay.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Wareman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Nay.
The motion passes with five ayes and four nays.
5C.
Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Uh, I'm going to vote nay because they're paying, we're paying market value between the two fundings. I like the project though, but nay.
Mr. Pryor?
I'm gonna vote aye until two, well, our next meeting to study this for the moment. I'll move, I'll vote aye on this one, but probably nay when it comes back.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Wareman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The motion passes with eight ayes and one nay.
5D, Betty Harrison, Nature Trail Phase Five. Betsy Harrison.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question about this one.
Yes, sir.
About the number of improvements, um, the price of the improvements, um, from Greenbelt funds, we're, we're funding a million dollars worth of minor improvements. They're, they're, they're funding about, about $2 million worth of improvements as well, but I thought that we were not allowed to fund a lot of improvements. Now, we do some for boardwalks, beach boardwalks and boardwalks through the marsh and stuff like that, and maybe that's what this is, but that just seemed like a high amount of improvements. And I'm not saying I'm gonna vote against this, I just want to know a little bit more about it.
All right, Mr. Dubuque. Do you know, do you have any specific information about this one? As to the improvements?
Sure. Um, so on the earlier, the earlier phases of the Betsy Harrison Nature Trail project, it was really intended to be a more simple nature trail. As the opportunity came about to acquire more of these phases, the Kiwak Conservancy's vision for this park became a little bit more elaborate with a more extensive trail system, adding a visitor information center, sweetgrass basket stands, boardwalks to a hammock island to explore. So as they kind of expanded on these plans, they made up for this 1 million minor improvement funds for Phase Five with the intent to use those funds on all phases of the property since they didn't request very much in the initial phases. So that's where the high dollar amount comes from. They are intending to use it on the entirety of the, of the project.
Mr. Moody?
More a question, I guess logistics, this kind of broadened up. This is the, is this the one that's paying their grant upfront, waiting for the state, first of all?
Correct. They're, they're pending their state.
Um, we've got this covenant in there, I guess, that we don't fund the, the bottom line thing until they, their fundraising efforts have reached whatever. So my question to you is more from an administrative standpoint, Mr. Rannam, Ms. Tooten, we, we gotta keep touching this thing. I mean, do we charge any fees or do we have to maintain? I mean, you know, they keep coming to us and go, "We got $100,000. You, you said, well, send me your bank statements. I want to look at it and prove it." We have to keep touching this thing and keep taking our time up, maintenancing and monitoring this thing, much more so than we would any other deals. I mean, there, I mean, how do we recoup that staff cost of time that we're touching this thing monthly or quarterly or whatever?
You're speaking of the special condition of approval?
Yes, sir. But this could go for anything that's gotta be, you know, again, these, some of these are, in my opinion, are patchwork together, that we've gotta spend more staff time making sure all this stuff pulls through. Are we charging, are there any fees or how do we, we, staff has got to keep touching these things. There's, we, it costs, it costs money.
Sure, Mr. Moody. Um, under the, um, under the structure of Greenbelt, there is administrative money set aside out of the allocation and that is what we use to fund the, the staff time basically to run the program.
Thank you.
Mr. Boykin?
Just to clarify a couple of things. This is, you know, a singular piece being considered tonight with, you know, the million dollars for the small improvements, but it's part of a totality of multiple parcels that have been previously purchased that make a network for nature trails. This is also covering the construction of a nature education center and gathering space on the property as an amenity to the public. And so to give you an idea, this is about a $3.6 million project with what's going in tonight in totality of all the person's been done before. And the Nature Conservancy has done a hundred percent match on this. And that's strong, you know, so I mean, and so, and it is public. And so I commend them for that, but it's, it's, I, I get the, looking at this one piece tonight, but this is kind of like the final piece of a puzzle in a project that has been done over time with Greenbelt funding. So yes, it would seem not at scale for a million dollars to be spent on the parcel tonight, but it's gonna be added and leveraged with their funding for the rest of this entire project. And Mr. Colley Fair is here tonight, if anybody has any specific information of, as far as deep details.
Yeah, we don't, I think we're ready to go. Uh, Mr. Kabrowski?
I want to say, though, this isn't in my district. This is the very type of thing I think is great for everybody in Charleston County. It's a very unique piece of land and I think it would add to the quality of life for all of us. So I'd be, I'd be in favor of this.
All right. Ms. Salisbury?
Um, Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Wareman?
Aye.
Chairman Middleton?
Aye.
The motion passes with nine ayes.
5F, Small Springs Scenic Buffer Rural Greenbelt Project?
Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Nay.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
No.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Wareman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The motion passes with six ayes and three nays.
5G, Maxi Farm Nature Preserve Rural Greenbelt Project?
Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Wareman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The motion passes with nine ayes.
5H, Cedar Hall Scenic Buffer?
Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Nay.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
No.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Wareman?
Aye.
Chairman Middleton?
Aye.
The motion passes with six ayes and three nays.
5I, Polk Flynn?
Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Nay.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
No.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Wareman?
Aye.
Chairman Middleton?
Nay.
The motion passes with six ayes and three nays.
5J, Preachers Pond?
Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Nay.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
No.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Wareman?
Aye.
Chairman Middleton?
Nay.
Motion passes with six ayes and three nays.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all for accommodating me.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, great discussion. I wish that we would, you know, work with staff to really codify, you know, things moving forward. 6A, pedestrian and temporary construction easement, 4355 Bridgeview Drive?
Moved approved.
Second.
Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. The ayes have it. We do have need for an executive session this evening. Certainly, we don't like abusing that privilege, but Ms. Hamm, can you tell us the reason for which we're going to executive session?
Yes, sir. There's a need for an executive session to discuss personnel matters regarding our boards and commissions, anticipated taking no more than 15 minutes.
All right. Is there a motion?
Move.
Second. Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Hey, man. Did you watch those World Series games?
Yeah.[1126.67]
our boards and commissions, anticipated taking no more than 15 minutes.
All right. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Hey, man. Did you watch those World Series games?